...of the Village of Green Hills to order for October the 8th, 2019. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Ms. Hocker?
Here.
Ms. Asmano?
Here.
And you'll notice we have a new person here, and I swore her in last Tuesday on the second, but we'll do a ceremonial swearing-in during my report later. All right, and we have a pledge or prayer by Maria.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have the minutes for the September 24th regular council meeting. Does anybody have any corrections? Hearing none, minutes are approved. At this time, I'd like to do a proclamation, and I'll go down here and invite Mr. Roy from Bargains &amp; Biots up. Can you read this down?
I want you to do it at podiums, like, microphone.
Just flip the microphone.
Proclamation is, whereas in 2015 Bargains &amp; Biots purchased former Johnny Troy's building located at Pitty Adams Street in Village of Green Hills and made substantial investment of building prior to opening for business in early 2016. Bargains &amp; Biots has steadily grown under the leadership of Mr. Greg Roy. Whereas Mr. Roy has made recent investments in landscaping surrounding the facility and parking lot, greatly enhanced the appearance of property and therefore enhanced the appearance of Green Hills. And whereas most recently, Mr. Roy has made yet another investment in a new startup company with Bargains &amp; Biots known as Gear Supply Company. And whereas Mr. Roy is a regular sponsor of the summer concerts on the commons, whereas Mr. Roy has once again demonstrated his willingness to be a good partner with the Village of Green Hills, becoming by becoming a platinum donor for the 2019 Harvest Fest. Now therefore, I, David Moore, Mayor of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, does recognize, honor, and thank Mr. Roy for his investments in Green Hills and ask the citizens of Green Hills to support this Green Hills business and do hereby declare Saturday, October 12th, 2019, as Bargains &amp; Biots Gear Supply Company Day in the Village of Green Hills. Keep up the good work. Okay, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. All right, moving on, reports of village officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a couple things I want to say before we get into our major presentation for this evening. And first, my compliments to everybody who worked very hard on Harvest Fest. I understand it was terrific. I'm starting to see some numbers that come back on it, and we more than doubled our sales on wristbands. So I'm thinking we probably went from about 250 in attendance to probably somewhere between 600 and 700. It was simply awesome, and I've heard nothing but good stuff, so good job to everybody who worked on that.
We can't stop smiling at each other.
Well, you should. And Friday, the Friday night was very successful. You know, we've tried movies before, and that was just a great turnout, so just, wow, terrific, good job. I just wanted to point out one item of our agreement tonight, and that's a grounds code contract, because it's a little different from where we were originally with them. Monetarily, not so different, but they're up, it's a two-year contract. We were, next year would be our second year. However, at this point in time, they're proposing to go three years with no price increase other than the 3% that would have happened between this year and next year anyway, and then stay at that same amount. I've told them there's going to be some changes in possible, you know, areas to cut, but they felt that those could be absorbed in what they currently do, and didn't see that there'd be any changes coming, so I just wanted to point out why that's in front of you at this point in time for a three-year period. But I really want to get into the main thing for tonight, certainly in terms of my report and a project we've been working on for many, many decades, perhaps. You know, we've kicked around for a long time what to do with the golf course, with dwindling membership, definitely low revenue for that piece of property. And I do want to note that when the village was originally being designed, that property was actually intended to be a public park, so our proposal, the concept you're going to hear about does accomplish that, actually going to execute that. So Todd Wales from Vivian Lamb Associates is here tonight. He did the concept plan that you have already seen, and he's going to explain it, walk us through it a little bit. And so Todd, if I could just turn it over to you. Council, since you kind of had our hardship here, we want the public to be able to see it, but you have copies of what's going to be up there, okay?
Should I just stand here?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, my name is Todd Wales. I am a nice park tech. I've been doing nice park tech and site planning for over 35 years, so mostly here in Ohio, but also in Florida, ever since I got out of college. I grew up about a mile and a half from here. It was in Forest Park, but just across in the east section of there. So very familiar with the site. Actually, in when I was growing up, I used to play golf there with my dad, and we were members of the pool, so I know it pretty well. I even used to go off number three, tee out the putter.
That was the good club.
Yeah, I remember, so I even tee out with the putter. So anyway, so yeah, and working with Yvonne, we talked about what to do with this property, and I wanted to take a good evaluation, walk all around, and take a good look at it, bottom of my own experiences into it, and wanted to look at a few goals of how to change this into a park and what would really work. The biggest, of course, is being an amenity for all of Green Hills. I think it's a great site. It's right in the middle of things, and it's just got so much potential. It's really, really exciting. Of course, the other was reduce maintenance. Right now, you're out there and all this land's taken care of, and it takes a lot of money, and it's not getting well utilized, so. The other thing was to really look at how we can take that amenity and leak it to the neighborhoods. And I'll show you a couple things on the site plan. The other thing is to start to create some, you know, natural habitats, you know, for some pollinators and wildflowers and wildlife and that kind of stuff, and certainly create opportunity for that, too. We also wanted to look at, you know, kind of paying tribute to what the site was, and that's why you'll see on the site plan a couple things that, you know, keep a putting ring right there, kind of when you first come in, and reutilize the clubhouse and, you know, right there you could, you know, reduce the gazebo where you have a beautiful view out to the entire site at kind of a higher elevation, so. So all right, if you look at site plan there, if you, first thing, the walk system, you know, certainly a great opportunity. Everybody likes to walk. See it right down here, looping around the lake. I laid that out so that everything is accessible. All those walks are deliberately laid out so that there's no 5% slope, and the walk system I'm recommending is gravelous. It's what's called a chip industrial layer that can be really hard to pack, and so the entire site could be accessible even in a wheelchair.
Nice.
So that can certainly be done. And then it also allows you to kind of, if you want to take kind of a short loop or a long loop, you have those opportunities, and wherever we could, it reaches out and dips into the community. And if you look up at the northwest corner, behind your place, take a link to the neighborhood, and to the northeast, and to the west, and then also adding a walk along the golf course parking lot and tying to the existing park. I mean, it all should be reed as one property and one amenity, one facility, and be able to walk back and forth and take advantage of all those great lands, so. And then, of course, the other thing is to start to get some education opportunities. You know, we kind of have a kiosk that might give a little bit of history, might tell a little bit about the natural environment, and then another idea is to have labels on the trees. There's a lot of great trees out there, and take advantage of that, and, you know, get people engaged, and plant a lot of new trees that have, you know, unique species to kind of make it somewhat of an honorable reading. If you could kind of take the picture to that image here. Well, that's fine.
I'm going to go back down.
Sure, we'll go back down real quick. One of the things we'll put in the site plan, kind of the pool there is an area for community garden. I wanted to show this image. I actually designed this one. That's in Wyoming, Ohio. But it's just, it's a really great system that, you know, we get these raised planters and gravel around it and fence it, so the fence keeps the deer out, keeps the critters out. It's easy to access, bend over, I mean, especially older people. You don't want to get down on your hands and knees in gardening. You just bend over, and we have a couple water spigots and good soil mix in there, and it's, this is the first year, that just opened this year, and it's been a huge success. And I think you could do something similar here, and get the community engaged and create those opportunities. I invite you guys, anytime I plan anything, it's always deer and groundhogs and everything. This could be a good opportunity. Okay, go to the next picture. Perfect. So these are some kind of representative images. One of the things that you see in the upper left is an amphitheater. There's kind of a nice hole right there, if you look at your site plan, you have a park on the end of the parking lot. There's a nice natural hole where we can do very little grading and simply introduce terrace seating coming down the hill. I understand you already have some, was it granite?
Granite curbing, yes.
Yeah. So it could be something that could be, you know, used for get-togethers and, you know, the fence, and be built right into the site without a lot of work. One of the main things we're going to look at in the middle image on the top is introducing kind of some wildflower curbing. You'll see on the site plan, it's kind of a lighter green, yellowish color, but a good chunk of the site can be turned over to that. And what I was trying to do was lay that out in areas that would be a little harder to contain, some of the steeper slopes and some of those, while keeping plenty of grass to meander around. And that image up in the upper middle really represents what the site could look like. And, you know, it's going to be low maintenance, a great amenity, and nice to walk around and hide from people and everything else on it. Lower left, introducing, there's, the grade works real well out there, and I understand there's already some equipment that could easily be made and allow us to go upon it. Pond down at low point could really be a focal point of this park. With that, what I would recommend is we plant, we're carrying plantings around the entire perimeter of the pond for a number of reasons. One is it allows for some water levels to go up and down without having to have lawn go right up to it. Another is the, can introduce more wildlife habitat with these type of regarian plants, but they're really great for mangos. And it also kind of keeps people out, you know, if someone's determined to get in, they will, like, you know, if a little kid is, kind of breaks loose, they're less likely to run through a bunch of, you know, need to waste time planting plants to get into, beginning with the lake, so that really helps. And one thing, maybe not, you don't know this, but if you surround a life like that with those types of plants, it tends to reduce geese. It doesn't eliminate them, but it tends to reduce them, because geese like to walk in from grass right into water, because they can see you. When they have to walk through something like that, they feel they're going to be a predator in there. So it has a lot of good reasons to kind of have this. It won't solve it, but it will. You can see there, we showed kiosks and some labels for the trees. I think something real simple that could just be added and, you know, expanded through time. And then, of course, we're suggesting, I'll pick a walkway down there with these tennis courts on it, you know, have some active activities and kind of a good location, so. That's kind of a broad overview, if anybody wants to ask questions or...
Actually, one question I had is, do you know, calculate what the distance is? So if you walk the whole loop, what kind of, I mean, do we know if it's a mile or?
Is there a spot there? I guess.
You know, one of the secret, you know, you can use your map with the map.
I'm just bringing it up because, you know, Walker, I know there's a lot of apps to compensate for that, but it's interesting to know from a running, walking standpoint what the length would be. And it looks like, I mean, you could have a smaller inner loop, but if you did start from the parking lot and worked your way all the way back?
Yeah, I'm certainly, I'm sure it's at least a model. I have that number of yachts, I just...
Oh, that's fine, just curious. Thank you.
And again, and, you know, you can see there's an opportunity for kind of a couple loop for them, so, you know, someone wants an easy short loop, or someone wants a little longer one.
Yeah, that's nice.
As far as the pond goes, is there a benefit to maybe thinking about some sort of fountain or to circulate the water in some form or fashion?
The keys to good pond health, and one is depth, and the other is to get some aeration in there. You can have kind of a big, traditional thing that you might see in some office park in Goulash or something, but you can also have things that sit on the bottom and just let air trickle up, make it harmless visible. That really helps, and it's great for fish and wildlife and stuff like that. Those systems aren't too bad, because their air is, you know, flexible. Yeah, I think that's...
And as far as the gravel walk, did you see any grades where you were concerned that might be possible washouts?
Well, yes, and there are certain places where...
I mean, I'm thinking, you mentioned hole number three, that's one.
Yes. Yeah, it is like having such a way where there are going to be places where we cross a natural swale, and there would need to be some culverts to allow, you know, you force the drainage to a culvert and let it go under the path, because you don't want it washing over the path. Yeah, that would have to happen in some locations.
All right. And then, one other question, sorry. If there was like a wedding held out there, is the thought behind it possibly the amphitheater, or were there certain areas?
Yeah, because the amphitheater would probably be the most likely point. It's close to the restrooms, it's close to the parking lot, and it's right there. I kind of call it the heart of the site with the gazebo, the old golf green and amphitheater. You know, that's kind of, it's kind of cool. And that's where I'd be like...
Is there potential to put an irrigation system in at the community garden, or would you just do the spigots?
You could do it. You know, a lot of people actually like watering.
They do, but I know there are other people that sometimes go out of town and can't be there.
Yeah, you counsel them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you need a backflip.
Yeah.
My only question, and I've asked this before when I've seen this, sledding. We currently have people sledding there. Is the spot on the north, is that where the, between the two prairies, would that still be a good spot? We used to do it on the east, but apparently people now do it on the north.
Yes, I know the grades pretty well, and that would work, and, I mean, you bring up your point, and if there's an obvious location, maybe we have a little break in the prairie or something, you know, prairie up the town.
We unofficially did it for years, so I figured people are going to keep on doing it.
Sure.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here, and I think Todd had done an opinion of probable cost. I had broken that down. That's the other sheet that you have into the, probably the order, steps that we will take in implementing this. So that was your other handout, and we intend to do that really as funding permits, so you haven't heard the last of us. I'm sure we'll need your help as we move forward with this, but we really appreciate it. It's just gorgeous, and we're looking forward to it.
Todd, I think it'd be a great asset.
Yep. I also want to point out that Todd is working on similar concepts for a few of our other green space areas right now, too, to tie in with our new home constructions, so we're excited about that.
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, do you have anything?
Wake you up.
Okay, moving on, law director?
I don't have any report this evening. Jeff didn't ask me to pass anything along.
Okay, all right. Clerk of council?
No, I just included an updated calendar for Ohio Municipal League for the quarterly meetings and conferences, if you might be interested in.
Police chief?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a formal report, but I can give you what's happened in the last two weeks, and we'll get the formal report out towards the end of the month as normal. As has already been mentioned, we had a blast at Harvest Fest. It was so much fun. I can't begin to count the number of youngsters that slid through both the front and the back of the cruiser. They alternated between being the good guys and the bad guys and playing cops and robbers with the cruiser, and some of our wonderful Citizens Police Academy volunteers, particularly Jim Hadley. Jim Hadley just has the absolute scoop on how to get all of those blue lights working properly, so he throws those on for the kids and lets them participate, and we had an absolutely good time. We just about sold out. Of course, it was all free, but many pamphlets and different things that we had, we had over a half a dozen people sign up for various programs such as the self-defense course, which we'll be scheduling in the near future. We're going to customize it to those who signed up and get them to agree to a time that's most convenient for them, so we'll be doing that. We're still looking for folks for Citizens Police Academy, but we'll continue to advertise those events and hopefully get those filled and progressing either later this year or early next year. One of the handouts that we had was our Green Hills Police says, "Don't be tricked, drugs are no treat." Safety tips on that. We still have those down at our front window. If anyone watching might want to stop by and get those, those are, as always, absolutely free, and we'd love for you to sign up for those. As most of you on council know, we honored Officer Bacon and Officer Lenhoff at the last council meeting a few weeks back for their lifesaving efforts. Also, we recently had our final park talk, the manager's park talk, and I believe our manager has found the key to success, which is having food at the park. We seem to have a lot more people show up than we cater, so I think you'll see some pizza, and if we can twist Mr. Lee's arm, we'll maybe have some burgers flipped.
Oh, he's the expert.
I know. So we're looking forward to those in the future. And finally, a welcome to our newest council member. We're glad to have you onboard and look forward to working with you in the future. Some statistics from last month, we investigated five accidents, six crimes, 475 other incidents. We had 736 contacts with citizens. 344 of those were dispatched by our communication center as compared to 245 last September. 392 were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 129 instances. We assisted other agencies 56 times. We made 48 criminal arrests and 95 traffic arrests or citations. And then just a final note, just not too many hours ago, we received this from Jessica Miranda, who's our state representative in the 28th House District. You may remember we had an incident last year where two youths thought that it would be funny to go around and film for YouTube, going up, approaching different people, and kind of with nonsensical quotes, and scared a 12-year-old boy in our west side of town to death, and we found out that the criminal child enticement law was still on the books somehow, but it had been found to be, at least a portion of it, unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court. So I contacted our state representatives, and Jessica Miranda did agree to sponsor, and she has a co-sponsor, Representative Plummer, the former Montgomery County sheriff, and they've gone forward with the joint child enticement bill, and they plan to introduce the bill this week. She mentioned that all systems are go. She said, "We will keep you posted on when this is assigned to a committee and when we may need you to come and join in proponent testimony." We also let you know the bill number once we obtain it, so we can harness support locally among law enforcement agencies, so we're very happy to see that moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions to the chief?
I just want to thank you, chief, for your, for everything you did for the weekend, for the...
It was a pleasure.
For the Harvest Fest and for keeping us all safe at all times, and your officers that were there at the different times. It really was a splendid job, and I hope that you also were able to get some other people to join the, our courses here and so forth. I hope you had some interest coming from that as well. Were there any incidents that you are aware of during those two days?
No negative incidents, no.
No incidents whatsoever?
Lots of happy, smiling faces.
That's why I expected of you, and that's what I, that's what I'm so happy about, everything that you have done. I really appreciate it.
I think those lights were used so much on the car that my favorite part of the Harvest Fest was this photo that I got at the end of the night where they had to actually pull a second cruiser on to jumpstart the one that had been there. I'll share that with you.
We used them to death.
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, we do have another village official here with us tonight, our finance director, and I understand you have a report?
I do. Yes, I just wanted to bring council up to date on some of the finance activities. 2020 budget discussions are set for this week, meeting with the various departments, and we're going to talk about the budget for next year as well as the fourth quarter's fund analysis to determine if there's any additional supplemental appropriations that will be needed between now and year end. The insurance renewals are underway. We did receive a quote back from Anthem Medical. That was our first quote. It did come in at an increase of 13.7%, very unfavorable compared to last year, which was under 5. So we are going out to market to obtain more favorable bids. All the employees are using what they call FormFire, where the data goes into the secure database, and the other carriers will use this to determine our statistics and determine, hopefully, a much better rate, so we're... much better rate. So we're, we're moving forward with that. And we hope we, we do get a better premium quoted to us here within the next, next month. The state auditors have wrapped up their field work here at the village, and the audit should be complete by month end, as I've mentioned before. So we're just still working on our little tidbits there. They, they are done visiting us, from what I understand. And the last thing, the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation issued a check to the village of $8,158. We received that yesterday. And that represents our share of the $1.5 billion dividend to all of Ohio's private and public employers for the year. And the dividend was made possible by the strong investment returns that have occurred during the last period and pump premium payments that have been made to them. And the dividend represents 88 percent of the village's premium that was paid in 2017. So that's the rebate for the 2017 policy year. So that was good news. We have more extra money coming into us.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
I like good news.
Good news.
Okay, moving on, the mayor's reports. Get Jennifer to come out here and swear her in, even though I've sworn her in before. We'll do this for the cameras.
Our videographer?
All right, repeat after me. Hi, Jennifer Osman-Oglu.
Hi, Jennifer Osman-Oglu.
Do hereby impart my unqualified support of-
Do hereby impart my unqualified support of-
And allegiance to-
And allegiance to-
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitutional laws of the state of Ohio.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
And charter and ordinance of the Village of Green Hills.
Charter and ordinance of the Village of Green Hills.
And pledge to administer my duties faithfully.
And pledge to administer my duties faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
As a council member of the council of the Village of Green Hills.
As a council member of the council of the Village of Green Hills.
Of Hamilton County.
Of Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Should've been better than I did.
The new council member. And I have, I have new committee assignments, so instead of waiting till the end of the year to redo this, I've worked on this the last few days. So these go into effect with the next, after this meeting. And so I'll just run through them. Community Development will be Jeff Halder as Chair, Natasha Metz Vice Chair, Recreation Cable TV, Natasha Metz Chair, Jeff Halder Vice Chair, Finance, Jack Lee, Jennifer Osman-Oglu Vice Chair, Services and Streets, Jennifer and Jack Lee, Governmental Affairs and Laws and Rules, Maria Walther, Melanie Hermes, Safety, Melanie Hermes and Maria Walther Vice Chair. And hopefully, we have a good working, everybody can get along, since I sort of redid this, this time, with the same people on two committees, so you can work back and forth, maybe a little easier. And that's all I have to report. Have I forgotten anything? Okay. Committee reports. In our Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot to report, other than upcoming will be the second reading of a couple of ordinances for final approval. That's it.
Okay, all right. Services and Streets, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to say a huge thank you to the Service Department for helping to set up and put everything together for Harvest Fest. I was there with them from noon till like 5:00 on Friday to set up everything for Harvest Fest. And then again, with Mike Castor and Brenda Davis in the morning. We did have some volunteers that I wanted to mention. Dan Dusa, Dan Dorflin were tremendous help throughout the entire weekend. Pat, I believe his last name was Stermer, but I could be wrong on that, so if I'm wrong, correct me, Pat. Rob Howell, Kenny Burke, just slipped out, so thank you for all of your help. Tony Schuler was there to help towards the end of the evening as well. So big thanks to everybody who took part in helping put that entire weekend together. That was wonderful. And then, did you want me to mention this now?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Just wanted to mention that the village has a road improvement levy renewal on the ballot in November. It's gonna be issue number five. The levy's been in existence since the 1970s. It will not raise your taxes. This renewal is 1.5 mils and generates approximately $37,000 for the village. We use these dollars exclusively for expenses associated with street maintenance, including road salt. Over the last five years, this levy helped to fund improvements on Winton Road, Foxworth, Jewel, June Dale, Handel, Ireland, Alona, Jennings, and Japonica. And looking ahead, we're hoping to be able to do Flanders, Carini, Ingram, and Damon, and even more. So once again, this is a renewal. It will not raise your taxes. The annual cost to a homeowner of a home valued at $100,000 is $19.53, or about $1.62 per month. And that concludes my report.
Just one question on the street signs. Are, are, how far along are we in that whole process, putting the street signs out?
I believe they're all-
I thought so, but I just was curious.
Except for around the school.
Fair enough.
Until we get the-
Okay, great. Yeah, no, they, they look great. I was just curious, because didn't know if every pocket had been covered. Thank you.
And I don't know if this belongs to Mrs. Metz, but I just wanted to mention that with the, the grounds pro, all the work they have been doing, they have, from what I have seen, and I've looked on every nook and cranny, every place, they have been very forthcoming and doing a very thorough job. Because I remember, I don't know if you remember, but every once in a while, I would say, "Oh, they missed this. They missed the clippings over here. They missed everything." And these guys are super.
They're doing wonderful-
They're doing a wonderful job. And the second thing, that I don't know if it's still under your purview or not, at one time ago, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a sweeper coming through the village. Well, I saw that there is a sweeper that belongs to Forest Park, and I wonder if they're, with a trading in of, of services or something, because we are such good neighbors. Perhaps we can do that again, because it really helped a lot with all what was, you know, embedded almost on the streets and in the areas close to the sidewalks. It's just kind of like in between them. It was like embedded part of the, of the scenery, which it was just like dirt and, and other materials that were accumulated there. And if we can do that again at some point in time, and again, I don't know who is under that. I don't know how much it was, the cost of it-
It'd be me.
At the time. And I don't know, I think it was an outside company that did it. But I did, I just happened to see Forest Park cleaning their streets. And I was behind that truck until I was able to pass it. And it said, "City of Forest Park." So if we can do some kind of negotiations, that we can use that, maybe be able to get a break and maybe be able to, to do it. Because I think that was the greatest thing.
Yeah, we can look into it, for sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and in the past, we did cooperate with Forest Park.
I know.
They traded. But that was their decision, that they didn't want to do that anymore. Now they have a new manager, so that's possible, new council, maybe.
A new thing, yeah. A new season, whatever.
Yeah.
And also, I didn't know who, who was the person responsible for reaching out to them. But the Harvest Fest was announced continuously on their announcement sign that they have, and the times, and everything. And I thought that that was absolutely incredible. I don't know, did it cost us money, or?
No, it did not charge us.
May I suggest to have a note, a letter of thank you, and sign it by us? Because, I mean, it was such a great thing to see. Every time that stop sign, you know, the stoplight was there, you know, you could see it passing in there. And, and every time. And it was just, just not once a day. I mean, I, I move around a lot, and on Winton Road. And every time coming or going, I saw it. So at different times of the day. So I thought that was super.
Yeah, Brenda was amazing in getting all that advertising.
And if we can, yeah, if we can do that, you know, just to write a thank you note for that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I think I've sat at that sign and seen it rotate fully, like three or four times. Looking for the day to actually pass by.
Okay, moving on, Safety, Melanie Hermes.
I do not have a report at this time, but I do have a second reading of an ordinance coming up shortly.
Okay. All right, Recreation Cable TV, Maria Walther.
Well, again, I thank everybody that came forth and helped us out. Natasha did a wonderful job coordinating for the movie, and that was absolutely incredible. I counted at one time in there, and then it got, very quickly got dark. But I, I could almost guess the bodies, silhouettes or something. About 50 kids were there. And with the adults and everything, it was a group, I would say, of 75 to 100. There was a particular picture in my mind of a little girl that had a tent. That was a castle. And she was just sitting there on the little door like that, just watching the movie like that. It was just absolutely incredible. And I did not have my phone with me. I didn't have it. And I don't know if anybody got able to, you know, was able to get any pictures or anything like that.
Yeah.
On the following day, everything couldn't have been more perfect. Weather-wise, people-wise, help-wise, we had so many different vendors. All the comments were very flattering and for the comments. Even though the one caveat that we have, if we have three days of rain, we have a mud pit. But we, we should really consider the contingency plan that we discussed just in case of that. It was very visible. The laser tags, the soccer balls, human soccer ball, you know, Jerome, Jerome was, had, had lots of kids with him all the time for his exhibit. We had, the music was always attended. We had a lot of people, actually, that came just for the music at the end, for the, the country band. The little jazz kids were incredible again.
They were really good.
They were very good. And, and the movements. I mean, it just, it was, it was incredible. And they all, you know, were very appreciative that we called them back. And we had a great time also with the doggy parade. And we had the jail guy, the jail dog. And it was like a Churchill dog, a bulldog, you know, with a little hat and everything, and the little t-shirt and stripes. Then we had the little kids parade. And the dogs, I think we had something about maybe 25 dogs in there.
I think combined with both the dog parade and the kitty parade, we had about 25.
25.
Total, across both of them. So it was about similar to both.
And we had a prince and a princess on the parade there. We had-
There was an alien. He won.
The alien. That was, that was the one that won. It was incredible. And that, we didn't see the whole costume. He's prepared, he was working on it, on the ship.
It's gonna have lights.
And he's working on it. It's in process for Halloween, and it's going to have lights.
So if you see a little kid running around with a green suit and an umbrella spaceship with lights on it, he won.
He was, he was incredible also. All the, all the vendors had really very nice and exquisite things on the crafts department. So all in all, I think that it was a very incredible day at the Harvest Fest.
Can I add, there was one I forgot to mention. The Girl Scouts actually came out and helped run the pumpkin painting as well.
The pumpkin, yeah, the pumpkin painting. We ran out of pumpkins.
Yeah.
We ran out of, there was something else we ran out of. I mean, it was, it was really very well attended. Let's put it that way. The, we had also the, the baskets for raffle. And that went really well as well. And we had, well, we just, we just, I don't know, it just was an incredible day. And after five years doing the Harvest Fest, this was the best one that we ever had.
Put it this way, the Legion had to make two runs for food.
Oh, that was it. They ran out of hamburgers altogether. And they had to make a run for that. And then they ran out of something else, that they had to make the run for that as well. So it was, attendance-wise, I don't, there was nobody clicking there at the door, but you know.
Wonderful.
It was wonderful. So I appreciate all the help from everybody. And later on, I will have something that I will have to present to Mr. Mayor to have a motion in front of you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, and Finance and Audit, does anybody?
Well, for Finance, I will have, I will have, we had the, you know, already that-
Yeah, the Finance person.
Yeah, and I will have one, the, one of them, one of the resolutions I have to, yeah.
Okay, Community Development, Jeff Halder.
Yes, um, that's the disadvantage of going last. A lot of things are mentioned that are my list. And it's like, I don't know if I have anything to say. I will say that I'm very excited from a community development standpoint. The redevelopment of the golf course, I think, is just a really great opportunity. I enjoy going down to Winton Woods Park. Will continue to do that. But to have something so similar and so close in the heart of the village, I think, could be a real asset. Thank you for the nice work that you've put together. Other things I wanted to mention, Jim Miller, I don't know, was he mentioned about the Pooch Parade? He was there to help judge the Pooch Parade. And he does so much for the village, and it's, just appreciate him very much. Other things we talked about, but I'll go over again, is the police officers, even their help at the end when we were cleaning up. And just, it's hard to clean up and you can't see. And all of a sudden, all these lights come on. And it's like, it was wonderful to have their help throughout the evening. Brenda did a fantastic job.
Oh, yes.
It's a lot to coordinate. Real, real impressive. I will say that we all stand on shoulders, and Doug and Diana Kohler have done a wonderful job over the last, what has it been, four or five years at least. So really appreciate them, and we hope that Doug has a speedy recovery from his operation. But we still very much appreciate what they've done over the years for the, for the Harvest Fest. But that concludes my report at this point.
All right. I might add, thank you to thank Chris Knight for emceeing.
I was just gonna say that. I forgot Chris Knight. There were so many random volunteers that I didn't have all their names. But yeah, Chris Knight, thank you for emceeing the whole event.
And the naked cowboy for making an appearance.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. How about 4 o'clock in the afternoon? Yes.
When I left, he was picking people up.
Yep.
Okay, hold business. Second reading of 2019-01-LNR Ordinance Amending the Zoning Code for the Village of Green Hills to amend Sections 1111, Definitions and Sections 1149.03 Regarding Wall Signs. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 2019-01-LNR, an ordinance amending the zoning code for the Village of Green Hills to amend Section 1111, Definitions and Sections, Section 1149.03 Regarding Wall Signs. Whereas the Green, Green Hills zoning code provides for certain regulations related to wall signs, and whereas the planning commission for the Village of Green Hills has recommended approval of certain amendments to the zoning code in order to amend Section 1111, Definitions and Section 1149.03 Regarding Wall Signs. Whereas a public hearing has been held as required by the zoning code, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Village Green Hills, member elected hereto concurring. Section 1, that the zoning code of the Village of Green Hills is hereby amended as set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that all other provisions of the zoning code shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
May I second it? Okay. Moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Osman-Oglu?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Ordinance 20- Ordinance 2019-01-LNR passes. Next one is 2019-02-LNR, An Ordinance Amending Sections 737.03 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding registration of peddlers and solicitors. Mr. Lee.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 2019-02-LNR, An Ordinance Amending the Sections 737.03 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding registration of peddlers and solicitors. Whereas, Section 737.03 of the Green Hills codified ordinances regulates the registration process for peddlers and solicitors, and whereas, council has determined it is in the public interest to make certain amendments to said section in order to clarify certain reasons for the denial of a peddler or solicitor application, and to provide an appeal process. Now, therefore be ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected hereto concurring. Section 1, that Sections 737.03 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances be amended as set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this ordinance shall be in effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
It's been moved and...
Second.
Yeah, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Ozmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Ordinance 29-02-LNR passes. And the next ordinance is 29-03-S, An Ordinance Amending Sections 303.08 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding impounding of vehicles. Ms. Hermes.
Ordinance number 2019-03-S, amending Section 303.08 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding impounding of vehicles. Whereas, Section 303.08 of the Green Hills codified ordinances regulates the impounding and redemption of vehicles. And whereas, council has determined it is in the public interest to make certain amendments to said section. Now, therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected hereto concurring. Section 1, that Sections 303.08 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances shall be amended to add Sections 303.08-A11 as follows. A11, when any vehicle has been left in a construction zone marked with no parking signs that have been posted for 24 hours or longer, and the owner cannot be located or is otherwise unavailable to immediately move the vehicle. Section 2, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Right, hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Ozmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance 2019-03-S passes. The next one, new business. We have Resolution 2019-28-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Ms. Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Record of Resolution, the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Resolution Number 2019-28-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas, the 2019 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 11th, 2018, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the Village by Ohio Revised Section, by Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705, Period 36A, A, letter A, and 5. However, an amended certificate of estimated resources does not need to be requested from the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, that Section 1, since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year of 2019, the following items of expenditures are to supplement appropriations for expenditures for the year of 2019. The fund description is the Police Fund 2901. The appropriation is $890,000. The change is $100,000, and the total being $990,000. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies, from, none, to, an amount. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. And, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Ozmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2019-28-F passes. Next, Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Manager to Enter into an Agreement with Grounds Pro LLC, 29-29-SNS. Ms. Hermes.
Uh, Metz.
Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2019-29-SNS, Authorizing the Municipal Manager to Enter into an Agreement with Grounds Pro LLC. Whereas, the Village of Green Hills desires to continue utilizing Grounds Pro for mowing and garden bed maintenance, and whereas, Grounds Pro has submitted a proposal for a three-year contract with the village that includes a 3% increase in the current rate, but with no additional increases over the three years. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Village of, by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Grounds Pro for mowing and garden bed maintenance services for the next three years. Section 2, that the finance director is authorized to make payments to Grounds Pro in the amount of approximately $30,015 annually. Said amount may vary only by the direction of the village to perform other services. Section 3, that the village may, from time to time, request the planting of seasonal flowers that will result in additional expenses, and therefore, payment due Grounds Pro. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the date of its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Sorry. All right. Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Oz... Ozmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr... Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Resolution 29, 2019-29-SNS passes. Next resolution is 29-30-SNS, Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Manager to Enter into an Agreement with Cargill for Road Salt. Ms. Metz.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2019-30-SNS, Authorizing the Municipal Manager to Purchase Road De-Icing Salt from Cargill, Inc. Whereas, it is necessary that the village have road salt on hand for the treatment of village streets during inclement weather, and whereas, the Village of Green Hills has participated in the Hamilton County Cooperative bid process for the purchase of road salt, and whereas, as a result of said bid process, the village has determined that Cargill Incorporated is the lowest and best bidder at a price of $89.66 per ton. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to accept the bid proposal from Cargill, Inc., for the purchase of road salt pursuant to the bid specifications incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the Village of Green Hills is further authorized to pay Cargill, Inc. a price of $89.66 per ton of road salt pursuant to said contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. How does the price compare to last year, and how much salt do we have left, and therefore, how much we have to buy?
Okay. And I didn't bring the exact figure. I had that in my last report. I think we're right around the low 70s right now. So, it's a kind of sizable increase for us, and it's unfortunate to see it swinging back up. If you remember, one year we were at like 125, and it went back down.
Yes.
It's gradually going back up again.
Back up again.
We estimate that we will pull from then about 600 tons a year. We've never completely used all that. Hopefully, that will continue. We probably, totally, wild guess right now, we probably have at least 400 tons stored. We're in pretty good shape right now.
Is the swing upwards due to the farmer's almanac?
I do not know. Right, that nasty bit that's forecasting seven major snows.
But I'm just asking. Just asking.
You never know.
Now, back when we passed that street levy, that we're, it was up for renewal, I think we were around maybe $12 a ton for salt, something like that.
Mm-hmm. It's really changed.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ozmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2019-30-SNS passes. I need a motion from someone to approve my appointment to the Fireman's Dependancy Board, and that would be Maria Walther.
I make that motion.
Okay. All right. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, calendar?
Halloween coming up.
Trick or treat night from 6 to 8 on Thursday, Halloween, October 31st.
Okay. And are we having a trunk and treat?
We're going to, we'd like to offer that at the store at the...
Bargains and buyouts will be having that same night. Hopefully, a trunk and treat in their parking lot.
Same time, you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is, I don't know if it's within the time, but Veterans Day coming up on November 11th. And have we heard anything about turkey raffle?
I know they're changing.
They're changing it, yes. And they're going to be the same ticket sales and stuff like that, but we're going to have, I believe it's a virtual turkey raffle.
Spaghetti dinner.
Oh, a spaghetti dinner, yeah.
And you would pay for entry into that. They'll still have the turkey raffle itself.
Yeah.
Except I can't remember the date, but it's in November.
There is actually an informational video, if you go to Facebook and search for Green Hills Fire Department. Chris Knight did a, probably about a 10-minute video featuring Chief Faith announcing all the details.
November 23rd.
Thank you. A 10-minute video?
I watched every minute.
So, that was November 23rd.
I give you a test at the end of the session here.
Jack, is there a time with that? With the...
You have to check the video.
No, I don't have that. But I, that's typically been 6:00.
Okay. And since this is our regular monthly council meeting, are we going to then cancel the Fourth Tuesday meeting, which would have been a work session, but some of us will be missing? Okay, so we'll cancel that work session. Okay. All right. Nothing else? We're adjourned.
You made it through, you first.